It's Callahan meeting order this evening, it's around seven o'clock. Ms. Harper, you're going to do the invitation. Ms. Harper, the invitation, we'll all stand and then we'll have our place.
That's great. Father of heaven, we thank you so much for your blessed provision of safety and sustenance for us. I praise you that you take care of us so well every day, watching out and protecting us. I thank you for the soldiers that continually watch out for the welfare of this country. I pray God that you bless and protect them as well. Thank you for this privilege that we have to come and conduct the city business tonight. I pray God that your perfect will will be accomplished, that your Holy Spirit would have a supreme influence on each of the aldermen and the mayor, and that all that is accomplished would bring glory to you. I praise you and thank you for all that you do. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. I pledge to the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I wrote all please.
Mayor Gilligan?
Here.
Alderman Regman?
Here.
Vice Mayor Anderson?
Here.
Alderman Harris?
Here.
Alvin Johnson?
Here.
Do the board members manage to look over the regular city meetings in January? I make a motion to approve the city meeting minutes, January 19, 2016, Mayor's say.
I'll say.
I'll say aye.
Aye.
Just going through history reports, utilities, aldermen, ares. We've got one more.
First off, as far as aldermen from last month, I reported that the utilities department was in the process of working on the main sewer line leak on Wood River, and we had yet to been able to resolve the issue. We resolved the issue very next day. We found that the line had been hit several times, and that the leak was coming from what's called a drain waste vent couple, which is illegal for any ground pressure use. And it just snapped into the rock over the top of it, so we're basically going to need to repair it when the backfill that they dropped the rock near the on top of it, and it's probably been leaking from there on. But anyway, that's repaired. We've had an emergency gas leak over at 1046 Station Drive. Heath announced that one. We actually found a gas leak and a gas valve leaking two houses down from there, so that has been resolved. We had 21 gas cutoffs just last month. We had three sewer calls, 21 cutoffs. Okay, Shedding Road during this last round on February 2nd, Shedding Road took a pretty good, pretty good hit. As a matter of fact, if the overflow, this caused a lot of problems. It actually undercut the road. We had to remove a bunch of debris. We ordered some sert rock, Heath did, and we filled in all four corners. And what we plan on doing is we plan on going back with concrete and covering the concrete up. Also, after we were all the steel and everything got out of the creek, Ken gave us a call and told us that the gas line is exposed, because it used to be buried up underneath there. The two-inch gas line has got a four-inch sleeve over the top of it, and what I'm preparing for, what we're preparing to do is we're going to actually encase that in concrete. And we're going to bring the concrete all the way back to the back edge of the culvert. I haven't got a estimation as far as the cost for the concrete. I'll have that and I'll report it to everybody when that time period comes and go out and estimate it out. We were going to do this last Thursday, but because of the freezing temps for the rest of the week, it would compromise the concrete and cause it to freeze and crack. And we've already got the sandbags over there to create copper dams. We've already got, excuse me, concrete screen for the reinforcement of the concrete once we get it forward. And so that's, we'll probably be doing that next week. Going to be a little rough to try to do it this week for some of the factors, we've got too much water in there right now. Same thing is, there was a 40-plus-foot tree that, well, first off, let me go back here. One of the Beaver Dam broke during that heavy rainstorm, it's caused a pretty good influx of water. And it actually happened about 11:00 PM that night, and Jenny and I were out on our deck actually watching the water come down through there. Two of the beavers perished. They're flooding up in the lake right now. When the cause of surge was to go over the spillway area, four of the blocks of the spillway have now been gone. They're, I don't know where they're at. I can't even find them down in the creek, but they're not there anymore. So this is probably going to lower the lead considerably, once everything else gets out of there as far as the debris. One of the other trees, it was probably about 40-plus-foot long, maybe a little longer than that at spillway, actually went up underneath the 257 culvert. On the 12th, the utility department cut the tree out and utilized a mini-ax for the removal of that tree, and we hold it away. We utilized that for traffic control and notified Chief Morris that we were going to be having a partial block of the Highway 257 at that time. We also had a situation on a sign at the end of Highland Drive. Now this goes back to 2012. Apparently someone put up a sign that said private drive, residents only, not through street. That sign had been removed, new concrete, or new pole was installed with concrete, and after it set a couple of days, a dead-end sign and no-out-in-that sign that the city reproved back in 2013, and I do have all documentation backed that, was put back in place. So that's been taken care of there. The gas department is fixing to have, go through their OQ training, which is required by TRA. This will be happening April 5th, 6th, 9th, 11th. Alderman Regman and myself will be taking all the OQs. The others will just be taking the split OQs. I want ahead and have Heath go ahead and order the ditch bucket for the mini-ax that we approved the last month. I kind of postponed this, because one of the things I was worried about on whether we were actually going to be able to actually dump it into a dump truck, after looking at the arm on the mini-ax. After the storm of February 2nd, we had to load up the excess sert rock that we used, and it's going to work fine, so we didn't have to go ahead and order it, so we can start concentrating on the drainage. Then we've had a bunch of miscellaneous calls that I'm just not going to go into right now. So as far as utilities, that's where we stand on the utility portion of it.
What we give about 21 cutoffs, these people so far have been coming back in there?
They're just, they're just people who are not paying and field for a pot. But they've all paid and haven't turned back down yet. All of it. Maybe two, one?
One, then another. What is, do we have any kind of program, like, I mean, do we have any programs in place to help people that have some real problems or something?
We work with them on an individual basis, if it's something we can, you know, work through the issue, but not in a, that can actually, I don't know.
So, I mean, I guess on an individual basis, they come in and then, yeah, someone thinks it's okay, then we can help them, or?
No, like, if they call in, they don't get paid twice a month, or, you know, and they're not going to get their check for another week, they've cut off all on an odd day, and they know they're not going to pay until Friday, and then we work with other people that know that. Yeah, they have situations.
And your code?
All right, scroll on finance, Josh.
Oh, good thing the budget is doing real well. The only place that we're lagging, that's due to, I mean, a lot of wind weather. Right now, we're only a third of our projected income for the gas department, so, and we've only got four more billings to go, so we're, we'll be tight on gas this year. As far as the rest of the budget, it's doing really well. Only other miscellaneous I have is, I'd like to thank everyone that helped on that Friday when we had all the snow to get the police hammer up and going for those guys. And we need to either, for Deerfield Inn, they allowed one of the officers, I think it was Officer Tomlin, that weekend, they allowed him to stay a couple nights up there with no charge, so he wouldn't have to try to get all the way back home and then back to work. We need to send them a thank you card, or actually go up there and pay them for allowing him to stay two nights, something like that. And other thing is, I wanted to thank Josh for Saturday and Sunday taking his weekend and doing the plowing and that type of thing, clearing the roads, best, what we could give them. That's all I have.
All right, scroll on parks, I'm reading.
It's cold over there, that's all I've got.
I don't much have anything myself, going police and fire, Vice Mayor Anderson.
I can give the fire report. We had, over the last month, we've had seven medical calls, we've had three fire calls. Two were inside the city, one was outside the city. Miss Laney's call was the tree that was down. So total calls inside the city was nine, calls outside the city was two. That's a total of eleven calls. And, let me see here, we had completed the 16-hour fire course, and I don't see anything on here about how well the chili supper did, but I imagine it did good. And so I'm going to call upon Chief Morris to give us a, here's your report, please.
In January, we had 90 citations issued, 80 calls for service, six arrests, 20 reports, five accident reports, which is amazing, considering the snow. Three state citations. One of the other things we have done and completed, which was major, was the LESO contract got signed and turned back in, everything's completed as of today. And I've talked with Ken, the coordinator for all that. We'll be working with him and getting that going again. Issuing all the body cameras Monday at our department meeting. Talked to Dave today, he says he's still shooting for April, but she's saying, he was saying the first, somewhere around in April. We're hoping we can get him back. The motorcycles that we have that have been sitting in the lobby for a year are going to be re-appropriated, they're going to Greenbrier Police Department. That's all going to be done through the LESO program, because we really just don't have any use for them, and they're sitting in our lobbies, so. Other than that, we did hire a new officer, which is going to help greatly. He's in the FTO program right now, which means he's training. He did a week with Bill in Aldeia. He is with Tomlin for at least the next two weeks, and when we're comfortable that he's learned everything. And this is the new officer, Don Ed Bill. He comes, he's from Chatham County, he graduated the academy in 2003.
Right.
So, he's got quite a bit of experience, so we're pretty comfortable that he's going to be ready to go pretty quick. That's it.
Glad to have you here.
Thank you.
Are there any sort of tires with motorcycles that are not inventory? I assume we're going to send them all with the motorcycle?
Yeah, the two motorcycles, one of them has dirt tires on it, one of them has street tires. When we got those, it was my understanding that the training academy wanted the street tires back, and they were never changed out and taken back down there, so. I've already spoke to Greenbrier, and Eric Putman down there knows the training coordinator, he's already talked to him, so they're going to get them changed out.
I have two questions for you. Was the fatality we had down here about a week ago?
Yes.
You know, going back to the other person in the vehicle?
The last I heard, did you guys hear anything? Tom? Tom?
She's fine.
Did you hear anything else about the lady and the rep fatality?
Uh, no, she got transferred to Vanderbilt, and the last time I heard, she was not doing well, but it was not a life-threatening injury.
I heard she was going to have to have back surgery, is what I heard.
Well, what I heard.
A friend of ours knows her and says she's got back, she's had back trouble, it's my opinion, and that she was doing okay considering certain things, so I don't know about the back surgery.
Yeah.
She just sent word she was doing well, considering the severity of that accident.
That excellent.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Scoring planning and zoning, you're going to be in for all the ares.
Before we get on the planning and zoning, I want to come back to utilities, the only thing that we need to kind of keep in mind, the Shedding Road culvert over there is going to continue to back up, it's going to continue to flood out, even though the concrete wasn't doing any good.
Talking more about the dry culvert?
No, I'm talking about Shedding Road, it's.
The actual culvert?
Yeah, which is the culvert, which is already, you know, the city's just running Since we really can't sit here and actually completely replace that to a better culvert, I'm going to suggest we look at some other options, and the possibility of future expansion on any of those waterways that actually tee into that area, we might want to seriously think about maybe detention ponds, in order to try to slow down the water on the extra developments that's going to happen, or may happen in the future. Now, what's already been cleared through planning and zoning, that has nothing to do with it, I'm just, we might want to seriously think about that, because we need less than the water that's going through that because it can't handle it. It's not handling it. Anyway, with that line, as far as planning and zoning goes, we're not going to be moving this month, we have nothing on the agenda. Last month, we elected to keep the same officers for, which is Wilson Webb for chairman, Jessica Link, vice chairwoman, and Taylor Heskey secretary. And I'd also like to welcome David Love as a new member to the planning and zoning. He will be replacing Walter Krest. Rick Bradley, our city planner, in a December meeting, retired. We're still actively looking for another city planner, planner, Wilson Webb's got this one. He's talked about Grant Green and Adam McCormick, and we're just still actively looking, nobody wants to take it. We have agreed to go ahead and have planning and zoning meetings held every Thursday of each month for the 2016 year, or until we locate a new city planner. And if it does conflict with their schedule, then we'll go back to the fourth Thursday of each month.
Do we still pay the state for that, like we used to?
We haven't paid them in years.
No, but I mean, they?
They don't even exist anymore.
No, they don't exist anymore. They used to pay them all the time, so they don't give us a list of anybody's available.
They completely closed that down?
It's all done, yeah.
What did City Greenbrier do about that day, through that?
City Greenbrier elected two years ago, when the MTS got away with all theirs, to have a civil engineer at each meeting and review everything, to make sure that it meets with the city code.
Federal agents?
Phil Blower.
That might be an alternative action, I don't know. Do you know anybody in that favor?
Well, that's a city engineer, civil engineer.
Oh, that's Park Wright or something like that.
No, I don't know, I didn't, we got.
CSR engineer, Jason. Jason is actually the civil engineer coming up the state for the City White House. He sits on their planning and zoning board.
What do you, what is Greenbrier of their methods?
They were second Tuesday night.
Second Tuesday night? That might be a possibility, looking at using their, our cops are pretty sound over there.
I'm going to talk to Adam. Adam pretty much told that, or told Wilson that he could come to the meetings, but he'd be more than happy to possibly work with us through email. I'm going to talk to him personally and see what we can learn. He was our city planner before, and he was really good. I'm going to see if I can possibly, with him, maybe get some guidance from him on his city plan.
Really good about the building codes.
Building codes are going to be, I'll have the building codes done, I better have them done within the next 28 days, because of the fire marshal letter that we just got. I'm going to have all that done, it's all level done. To prevent the dam so far, our next meeting.
Which addition?
2012 on everything, except for the energy code, which is going to be 2009. And we're opting out of the, we're trying to create separate ordinance, we're opting out of the automatic sprinkler systems and the one, and two bedroom dwellings in town with two hour power outlets.
Okay.
And that's all I have to come in.
Going to see the board.
I do not have a question.
Going to the ordinance, ordinance 2016-101, this is an ordinance amended, ordinance 9534. I make a motion to close the meeting for a public hearing.
I'll second.
I'll say aye. This is an ordinance, amend ordinance 9534, that is designed, ordinance of the city, reached up to and see by deleting section 5105-1.2E1, minimum lot size, in its entirety, adding a new section, 5105-1.2E1, minimum lot size, to whip. There's a copy of this, if anybody has any questions on it. We had a first reading last month, this will be the second final reading, if anybody has any questions on that, they're welcome to ask.
I have a question, is that including in all zonings? It doesn't mention the zoning in here, it just mentions the minimum lot size.
So about subdivision size, is that what you get at?
No.
Or their own rates, don't they?
No, the minimum lot size, everything stays the same, the only thing that we have changed is where it says area, we put per family. And that's the only thing that's changed on it. Everything else has stayed the same.
Okay. Any other questions, I'll make a motion to bring the order, the ordinance back into the city meeting.
Second.
I'll say aye.
Aye.
This will be the second final reading of ordinance number 2016 dash O1, and makes a motion to accept. I hear a second.
I'll second.
I'll say aye.
Aye.
Next thing, a bit of title software purchase, I think you and Josh have been handling that in this ride.
Yeah, we're, we're ready to go with this project. And basically, what we're going to do, we've got everything worked out in the budget, we're going to do, ask for a two-year note. Two-year note for basically $49,000, and that'll get us our complete software system for the city, and that's going to add four new workstations. And I make a motion to purchase the software and to do a two-year note with the money, that basically $49,000.
I asked the ladies in the office there, are we, and Miss Kelly wasn't there, are we, is this the top-notch system? I'm not up to date on all of that.
It's good software. It's, your software is well-known, and the info software is well-known and used a lot.
Is the software system, we purchased 34 years ago, what was that?
We upgraded its interest, which is cohort, yeah. We just upgraded.
Would you prefer to get on my note on it, said this paid for?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
Motion's on, take it, second. I'll say it. All favor say aye?
Aye.
My motion's carried, no opposition. Going new bidings, Keith Laney, is the payroll management, comp time?
Uh, there's two parts to that. One, we've talked about it, we never have voting on it, to do away with comp time for all the departments, and it'll just be, we'll just do time and half or whatever overtime when it arises. The first part of that, I want to make a motion to do away with comp time. Discontinue any comp time.
I'll second.
I have a question, people who have comp time now, still in play, I direct on that?
Yes.
You talking about from today on?
Yes.
How many people we have that have comp time? Kelly?
Just one.
Motion, second. All favor say aye? No opposition. Second part?
The second part of that, spoken with Heath, and he has, I don't have the note, he has a note. He has a total of 163 hours, and he wants to keep 80 of that, two weeks of that, you want to keep, correct?
Yeah.
Okay. And, and we will buy out the remainder at its current rate.
So you've got a total of how much is?
Well, it was 163 this past pay period, but I had overtime, or caught time for this past weekend, when I had to go out.
Okay, let me add a little, in this motion, I was going to retract it back, and that way you'll, for that, you'll get overtime.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay.
So what we're going to do now, basically, is pay overtime.
Correct.
For the comp time.
Yes.
We're going to get hammered with a big bill from somebody, if they leave, basically, we're right in time. So you've got 83 hours you're going to cash in on, but you're going to keep paying, am I just saying that correctly?
Yes.
You got a motion, I'll take it. Anybody have any questions?
You didn't make them.
I'm sorry, I make a motion to buy out his remaining comp time.
I'll say it. Second, Mr. Regman, all favor say aye?
Aye.
I know my position, my motion's carried. Going to change the department status for Zach?
We need to also change his payroll method from salary to hourly.
I'm sorry, I actually had three parts there, I should.
Just fine. Amend your motion.
I want to make a motion also to change him from salary, salary to hourly.
I'll second.
This is a motion to change Keith Laney's to salary to hourly.
Correct.
Okay, you got a first and a second, all favor say aye?
Aye.
All motion's carried, no opposition.
That eliminates all of our salary employees in the city, correct? Everybody's hourly now.
That's correct.
Next thing, be changing the department status for Zach.
Okay, yeah, we want to make a change with Zach, he's still going to be under the fire department, he's going to answer to Tony, and then Mr. Harris and Kelly and myself are going to work on the other half of his work list, we're still putting that together. So I guess his status is, we're going to look at, is just strictly the fire department?
Is he working for you?
He's not going to be in the utilities anymore.
At all?
At all. I mean, unless, they just have to have.
So what is his job, basically, going to be, what would he be doing?
Well, half of that, we're still getting his list together, but his status is, will be under the fire department. But he's going to answer to Tony and Kelly, and then probably some to Mike.
But basically, right now, he's just a fire, play fire?
Yes, that's the only way you locate him.
You got all this certification training?
Yes.
How long has he been?
He's got firefighter one, and he's a first responder.
How long has he been a firefighter?
Two, I guess two years.
So he puts his fire in what?
In the firefighter wing.
As of right now, he's a full-time firefighter, though, am I understanding that right?
Yes.
But we're looking at branching out, possibly do some things for Mr. Harris? What is his hour? What is his hours at?
13. His hours are from 8 to 4.
Does he have a drive fire trucks?
He's signed off on, he's been through all the programs, he's signed off on all the trucks.
So he can drive any?
Can drive any.
Is he also doing trending over there on the other two guys? The other two guys?
No, they went to some places together.
You make a motion for this, or you just want to bring it up, or he's already hired here anyway, I'm just trying to figure out what position he has.
Yeah, I, I, I'm just doing the clarification for everybody.
Okay. It's going to appoint park and zoning board appeals member. Do you have somebody to matter for that?
I also have that.
I have none personally, tell anybody that's interested in that position. Anybody has somebody to matter, you're welcome to bring them up. We just need one, am I correct on that?
That's correct.
Wait, do we have anything coming up board, board appeals?
No.
We'll find somebody by this way.
I do want to keep, ask the board, keep John Carpenter and Jim Crane on our board board. Sign them up for four more years or whatever we get out of them.
Second. What are you talking about? Is there terms now, is that what you're saying?
I thought we did away with it back when Elizabeth Flay was.
We didn't do away with it back from.
Yeah, I thought we did away with it. Basically, I remember the board, as I was sitting out there saying, if we got somebody who won't be on the board, we're not gonna put a term limit on it. I thought that.
You can reappoint them. They still have to be appointed according to our code.
So I'm gonna make the motion that we reappoint John Carpenter and Mr. and Ms. Jim Crane to the board.
When is their term on? Now, maybe this is last month?
Yeah, it was around January.
Into this month?
No, January, they were, it's January.
Okay, he's got a motion. I'll say it. Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
No opposition. Going to Metro Gilson replaces sewer flow meter. I guess you know all about that, Josh.
Well, we were going to speak tonight with, uh, Mr. Snyder.
I'm here with us.
Mr. Snyder contacted me from Metro.
Very fast.
And Metro and Gilson would like to replace our analog meter. They were gonna split the cost and put in a, a new digital system where they can get all the reads and all of that from it. And before we answer back to him, Mike had some information about the new style digital systems, because there is a monthly cost of those, because there's, I guess like a, I'm gonna call it a Verizon-type connection, is that, there's some type of wireless connection on that, how they get to readings and things, and there's a monthly cost to all of that. And we will send back an email with some questions, who's gonna cover that cost monthly for the new system.
Also, a portion of the electronics that were stated in the letter, I need more clarification on before I consider, I don't know what electronics are talking about, what kind of cost, you know, taxes going place on the city. Because there's nothing wrong with one yet now, this is basically for them not having to send a person up here, which doesn't make a whole lot of sense to me, for the fact is that they still send a person up here once a month to take sewer samples. So, anyway, but, uh.
We're talking Metro, you're ahead.
Well, Metro and Gilson are gonna split the cost of $10,800 for the, the Triton, that sort of system.
And I guess I'm gonna make a contingent motion.
10,000?
It's $10,800. I'm gonna make a contingent motion that, to agree to it, contingent there's no monthly cost at this time to the city of Ridgestop. And if there's going to be, then we'll come back in the month of March and see where everybody needs to be.
How long is, at this time, I ask, why don't we just say that there's no monthly cost to the city of Ridgestop?
We've got, because I, we don't have an answer to that.
No.
That's why I'm just making a contingent to agree with Metro and Gilson, contingent there are no costs to the city of Ridgestop.
Well, I'm not sure that it's Metro pushing it, because I don't think Gilson has a problem with it. If they're on charge Gilson, and we've contracted with Gilson, we don't have much choice but not, I'm not in disagreement with what you're saying, but I'm sure Metro's pushing that and not Gilson.
I agree with that. That's why, that's why we brought up the question, until the questions are answered, you know, I don't want to agree to it.
Are they asking us to agree to it now? They sent us something, asked them for a break out?
They asked us to, that's why it's only, they asked us.
Was they having to give us a figure? Or the 10,000, what's your?
The 10,800 is what Metro and Gilson is gonna split. My part, my part is the monthly cost.
How much is the monthly cost? You know about it?
It was $233, it was three different monthly fees, and I think according to, boy, $233 is what I told you, if I remember right, I don't have it with me, but.
There were three different costs, I believe.
There was three different costs. Processing, you can have two other costs.
So we got three fees and 5, 5,500 dollar available ones, but.
That's what I'm trying to find out.
I don't think we're paying for the cost of the 10,800 dollars over this.
No, no, we're paying the dab processing for the monthly dab process or?
Yes.
Yeah. I don't know whether we're paying or not.
What was your motion again, McCall? I'm sorry.
He made a motion, as long as we have to pay anything, with Virginia's regarding, but.
I made a motion to agree to the meter replacement with Metro and Gilson, contingent there are no monthly costs to the city of Ridgestop.
I said that motion.
I think we're all going to, we're gonna be talking about this in the next month. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All in favor, no opposition on that. Did they give you any kind of timeframe when they wanted to do it, or?
No, no, we haven't, we haven't totally agreed to it.
Probably not a meeting with Metro and Gilson to figure out what's going on down there.
We're just gonna try to do a bite and see what, see what, if that cost is gonna reflect to our city, or whether they're gonna cover that cost. If they cover that cost, our problem.
I believe they're, uh, you selling the start stock work hours, staggered down?
Remove that from, remove that from the agenda.
You selling your property, trailers, equipment? Do you know anything about that?
We're looking to get bids on a dump trailer, uh, one that's equivalent or heavy enough to carry the mini X around. Mike's got a lot of streets when you clean them. Stormwater runoff out of the drainage is blocked up and, since it goes full, Pete and I met with them last year, and they just bought a brand-new trailer, and it looks pretty nice the way they were using it. You don't have to carry the dump truck, you can take one truck, move the equipment, haul off any debris, we can use it for gravel, whatever. I have made some phone calls today and tried to get some bids and trying to get that together for tonight. I'm hoping that they're ranging from 9,300 down to 70, 9,100 to 73,000.
Do they have a state fairing they like or?
That, I do not know. But we, we're a little bit different than what Gilson's got. Their trailer's a little bit lighter because their machine is a little bit smaller. So we're gonna have to spec ours out a little heavier to where we don't have any trouble with next year with us overloading or anything like that. So trying to get a little more information on that.
Okay, well, that's a good idea. I know a lot of people who do it, especially small-town, you know, contractors, they have, uh, you know, the dump trailer, they can haul their equipment inside the dump trailer. Drop it off, load it up, take that away, come back and get the dump trailer, I mean, get the equipment. So, I think it's a good idea.
Right, right.
Another thing, I think our dump truck, they've been making quite a bit of work into it.
It's pretty bold to bid on it lately.
Kills two birds with one stone.
So I guess get some bids and bring it back. I don't know, I think about the problem. What would we decide to do about the fence over, um, shed area for all the equipment? Have we ever given bids on that? We've talked about that two, three times.
At that time, I think we were looking to make quote-unquote an impound lot to protect the LSO equipment, which we have to do. Ms. Kelly and I spent, or an hour and a half, cutting the wall with the LSO program. Right now, we really can't sell anything, and we were looking to maybe sell one piece of equipment to help pay for that. And since that's not happened, it was, I think we got one bid of $7,500 or something, and we just don't have that money to, I guess, do, but it's hard to justify for protecting that equipment.
So all of us just sitting on there hoping we made it to, like it was?
It's got a lock on it.
Sure does have a lock on it, even though the equipment it does, yeah. There's not a fence or anything over there to keep people from going in, right?
No, but anything over there.
Police department, patrol area, every night?
Yeah.
I don't know if we had any trouble over there, but.
We have, but everything is locked, uh, everything, the generators, the, there's no way you could actually start one and drive it off.
If anything over there gets stolen, a chain link fence is not gonna stop it. Everything over there, heavy enough, run right over it. But I know that's part of their requirements, and I talked to Kevin about that before, and they kind of backed off of that because of the cost that the cities are incurring and obviously, he's not as, he's not pushing it as hard as he was last year this time. Might change tomorrow.
Josh, you want to back up on that, for that trailer just mentioned? Do you want to make a motion for a certain money amount range, in case y'all find something to purchase, or what do you want to do? Or you wait till next month? Is that what you want me to do?
I'd hate to wait till next month, but to be honest with you, I don't know how we, I need to look, they're supposed to be emailing me the specs on these. Gilson, I talked to him today, and they, they would have changed a few things that would have catered to their needs a little more. And from my understanding, we have to spec it out to everybody differently, or the same where they can bid it. So I really don't know, we're looking at closer to 10 or closer to 7, to be perfectly honest with you.
One more?
Yeah, that's why I'd rather.
You don't have another trailer that hauls the excavator?
I can get it where, I mean, naturally the excavator, but that wouldn't, surely shouldn't be the minimum, because we may be loading up with a lot of siltation and everything else, so I could get it real heavy.
No, I'm, I'm, my specifications in my mind are 7,000 pound axles, I believe our machines, 10 or 11,000 pounds, maybe closer to 10. We're, we're specing it over, and honestly, with the, the one-ton dodge, but with the box and the equipment, I don't, wouldn't want to pull a whole lot more than 14,000 or 12,000 pounds loaded. It's a, I'd rather just wait, get some more information if we have to.
Okay, it's going to ordinance 2016-102. This is an ordinance regulating the use of gas-powered motorized transport bikes, including not attitude to ATV, all terrain vehicles, dirt bikes, mini motorcycles and go-cars within the city of Ridgestop. At its regularly scheduled union notice meeting, does obtain, passes by the board. This is the first reading on this ordinance, and its second reading will be next month. Everybody wish that a copy or a ten. For the prior public hearing, I think, planning board participant, like, planning board participant.
This is something I've worked on, uh, with the complaints we've had and trying to give our police department something to enforce if we want to. I'll be the, I don't like being told what I can or can't do, so I don't know.
The planning board has, are you saying that?
No, I'm not, because this came before, this came before the, uh, the, uh.
I mean, we went out this last night at the workshop. Do you see?
Yes.
Do you like the way we, do you see anything we should add or did not add?
Uh, it's better than what we've got right now. What we have right now is just, it's so general, it's.
Does this allow anything, you think, to enforce the problem that we've been having?
Yeah, if it meets with the decimal limit, yes.
How do we determine that?
Uh, we can download an app on our phone, a decimal meter, and check, that's not an issue at all. I mean, it's, it's, it's much better than what we've got. It's, of course, nothing's gonna be perfect, but it's a better.
I went at the workshop last night, but is there anything you think that should be added to this, or we have to enforce the law?
Well, I'm kind of in the, in the same boat with, with everybody that we've talked to about it.
Better than what we got?
It is better than what we've got. I just, I'm scared to, to keep adding and adding and adding, because you're gonna, you're gonna end up.
Go get part of the policing.
Well, that, and it's, it's gonna be so generalized that you're gonna have to start policing everything. There's certain, you know what I'm saying, there's, if somebody's gonna call it, they're building out.
Well, that's allowing you to take care of the problem that they've been having in the area for quite a while.
It will help.
Potentially, if the violation is there, we're not 100% sure that the decimal violation is there. We looked at some ordinance, I think, right up at one from Clarksville, they, you can't start your long-term route for, what, nine o'clock in the morning or something, I mean, it's.
Yeah, Clark, City of Clarksville is, it's like 20 pages.
You go from one extreme to the other, we, we took a lot of things in here last night, trying to, I mean, we're still a rural town, so.
I was wanting to question, I was gonna ask you, did you read this, such a change last night?
No, I haven't read it since you guys worked on it last night.
We took a lot of stuff out of here, uh, that was actually presented last night.
Yeah, the only thing I was worried about, I was still in there with the decimal limit. That's, that's what I really need to, to look at.
The thing is, we can, you know, we could probably make the motion going past this tonight, but still we might not have a second reading, so any tweaks that we need to do, we could do within that time period prior to the second reading. If that's good with everybody?
Yeah, I'm good with that. I mean, this will be something we had to tweak on, I'm sure, and for the past year the way we need to do.
Probably tweaked on a little bit last night, too, you know, the workshop.
I made a motion, pass ordinance 2016-102, in second place. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All, all in favor, you go up to.
I'm gonna make a motion, I have something to the agenda. And that's the, the drawing for the EMS.
I'll say it.
Motion was gonna be, uh, uh.
We have to get, get added to the, we have.
You gotta add it by.
My motion.
All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Glad we have our placement there, Mr. Harper.
The, the first thing that we have for vehicles, we received no bids on any of them, so we had the city engineer do some work on to, uh, to where we got something that we can maybe make the bidding process a little easier. But what my motion is gonna be is for the city of Ridgestop to be the general contractor and to let Josh oversee it, and we'll break it down into whatever, how many phases, whether it's eight phases or 10, and bid, uh, process out, like this excavating, uh, suck floor, the concrete, patting, and then the, the general shell and that type of thing.
You know, it's, right now, we got us kind of a little polearm, it's just kind of, if I lived over there, or if I had a business post line, I mean, I would, I would be checking into the materials used and.
The, the pole, it's not showing, the pole's on the front.
I mean, and I'm not saying because we did the first plan, I'm just saying this is not very. And I'm not saying because we did the first plan, I'm just saying this is not very...
Well, this was the original idea of what we were wanting to do. I mean, and this is basi- basically like the ones, if you go up to Coop Town, the only thing, it, that's what it is until they put a brick facade on the front.
Yeah. I'm just saying that if I lived over here in this neighborhood, and if somebody was building this, I wouldn't want it to pop straight in my house. I mean, it probably wouldn't either, I don't know, but it's not a very pretty build, you know?
Well, I mean, and again, it's not showing the, the front porch on there, and there would be a, it's for, they've got a metal that makes it look like a winged cover on the front. I mean, it's going to have a nice facade on the front.
When you say this is originally what we wanted, almost reminds me of the swings that you see in that cartoon, and says what I only really wanted was a tire swing, you know? So that's what we got. That's what we got. This doesn't look good to me.
Well, I mean, if we, if we go back and do what, what the previous set of plans are, we're looking at two hundred thousand dollars built, that's not what the county, that's what they built.
Happened to be two hundred thousand, just same size, isn't it?
Do what?
Is this building here approximately the same size?
The only guy that responded, that I called back, would not even give us a bid, and he said he wouldn't touch it, plus the two hundred thousand bid, that was the lack of information he had. No, I don't think it would have caused that, but that's the only contract.
If you gave him this set of plans, he would be lacking, you can't apply me on that for drawings, he'd be lacking a lot of it, but he'd say, I gotta bid it, you know? I mean, I'm just saying, this is not any more complete than the other set. This is just a different, I mean, this has a pole barn footing, the other one had a conventional footing, that's the, I mean, you know, you'd have to come up to the slab, and then, you got the same size building. But this is what...
This is what he sent me for us to look at, as I stated before the meeting. He's going to give us a full set of plans once we agree this is what we were wanting. He is out of town, he's been in Athens, Tennessee for five straight days, so he's not been back to his laptop to...
But I mean, this, this will not even be bid, this will not be bid if we go with the, this set of documents here, totally different. We're not going to put it out for vote to bid, we're going to vote to self-perform on the get-go.
Since we didn't receive any bids, we can, from what I've been told...
We, we've not bid this.
Exactly.
Well, that's all I'm, that's exactly what I'm saying. You know, it's just, I don't know. I mean, if we were going to buy Chevrolets, and all of a sudden say, now we're going to get bus wagons, we don't have to get bids on the bus wagons we bought for this one?
Well, when we get a full set of plans, let's put it out to bid, and then see what comes back for a full package. We'll have a full package by then, and if it comes in above what we can afford, we'll go back to what we...
Then we should, yeah.
Then we'll go back to what we're, you know, we're calling proposing, and speed it out in the office. I, I told him before the meeting, I, you know, when he asked, I'll help oversee, I don't mind doing it, but, you know, that's my time, too.
Don't do that.
I wish it would come in under what we've got budgeted, and let one person handle it all, other than this board. But I don't know that we can do that and make it look nice, just, you know? He's, he's got a full set of plans coming, this was just something for the EMS personnel to look at, to tweak. You know, like I said, the only thing that we will not have is a set of elevation plans, which we don't need. Now, he was trying to keep it down to a minimal where it wouldn't cost the city that much money. This is something I printed off today, and once we make the tweaks, like I said, we've got a, a front porch, he's left off the return supply for the dump work, it's going to be inside the closet. I had a few questions on the, the parking, which Mike brought up, that we had to do conventional parking. Originally, we were going to do, everyone's going to park behind each other on A and B shift, or A, B, and C shift, just to keep the footprint down that we don't have to deed to the county, that would keep us having to deed a larger amount of square footage to the county. You know, we've got several things we need to tweak, it's not perfect.
How much does the county allow you on that?
Money wise, a hundred thousand dollars.
And we give them a piece of property that's not correct?
We give them the footprint to build the sit-down.
Well, then what I want to do is, I will send my motion and make a motion, once we get the full set of plans, if we need to have a special call meeting, we'll have a special call meeting to move this project along. That's my motion.
My second then.
I agree with that. I'd like to see a full set of plans, Mr. Allen. Okay. Got three agreed. Four agreed, I've stayed. Any citizens comments this evening? They'll do, we'll bring you to the workshop. I know y'all waited a long time, they write it on the speech, I'm sorry to keep this long.
I'd like to, please.
This way.
My name is Kristy Pitten, and I am the mom of an Eagle Scout candidate. And he is hoping, he's, he would be here himself, but I'm hoping right now that he's passing a chemistry test in a class that he's taking. But he is proposing, in his proposal, it requires a product, a project beneficiary signature, and we're hoping that the, the city of Ridgestop will be the beneficiary. What he wants to do is provide a video for the city of Ridgestop, which, if deemed worthy, could be linked to the city of Ridgestop website, that would be a promotional video, kind of a highlight of what makes Ridgestop a standout community, what makes Ridgestop unique, and something that he can put together with, with the help of some people that he, he has planted the content with. But it requires, before we can send that proposal on to the, the proper authorities at the, at the district level, he needs to obtain permission from the beneficiary to move along with that project. So that's why I'm here tonight.
I'm, I'm just, we're honored, I don't thank anybody here, whatever, with that, or helping the entire Mercedes-Benz Awards, so...
Well, I, I have paperwork here, and I can present that to you after, after the meeting. Also, if there are any other, I have, I have a unit chair for the troop, and have probably another three or four boys who are coming up soon on their Eagle projects, so if you, as a council, have ideas about future projects, their ears are open.
Okay.
Is this, is this the same boy scout troop?
It's a different troop.
This is, yeah, this is actually White House, it's a White House troop, but we live in Ridgestop area, so...
We've got a troop come to our port and present some ideas that they won't proceed, so that's why I was...
Outlaws.
We enjoy the help.
That's, that's also what I was thinking, over in Park, that's Eagle Scout, that, you know, really focused on lead programs, educating the young people or anybody, young girl heart, but, you know, to, some type of project like that would be ideal, I think it would be something that the, the council, the Eagle Scout council would like to see.
Well, we definitely have some boys who are in need of projects coming up, so we're, they would be open.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other citizens have a comment?
Mr. Allen, on the ordinance that you just passed on first reading tonight, nobody likes to be told what to do, what not to, I understand that, especially when it comes to our children and not having fun. You talked about the hours that they can operate. Look at that section right there and see, might be good to have a section that is period school hours, being from August through May, whenever school's in, that you have one set of hours, but then in the summertime, especially on that Saturday where you've got Saturday ten AM to five PM, move that five PM till seven, eight, nine o'clock, because it stays light that long, kids are out playing, they're going to ride them. I mean, when my kids were growing up, we'd run Lynn Circle, as the mayor knows, my boys run that road up and down through there big time, so nobody likes to be told what to do, but that, those hours maybe could be extended a little bit, I think. Not let them do it through school year, but, but once school, during the month of school's out, extend those hours into the evening a little bit.
Okay, thank you, Doug.
I think eight or nine o'clock may be a little... Main reason that we're doing this, Mr. Allen, is because we have a lot of citizens here last month, and they were complaining about how loud, how, how terrible it was. Of course, we can handle that with the decimal reading at twenty inches from the idol, but I'm just saying that we, you know, we were listening to their side, too, there's several of them that were just kind of fed up with it. I don't know about going till nine o'clock on Saturday evenings.
That's just a suggestion, I'm just saying that, you know, if you've got kids out playing on Saturday afternoon, and you don't tell them they got to shut down at five o'clock, that, that's a little bit, that's a little bit strange. The, the noise level, I'm a hundred percent for it. I, I love not making noise.
When I'm talking about noise level, you know, I don't know, I hear the race track blasting from four o'clock to about one o'clock in the morning, and I definitely get tired of listening to that, but I've listened to it almost all my life, so...
This is a whole lot better than what we've got, the noise level will allow officers to, to quieten that part of it down, I, I hope.
The decimal thing's what surprised me, that Chief Brian was talking about, I didn't know you could just pull out one of your phone like that, so...
Had to carry a tape.
That might make a big difference.
Did we get the twenty inches, the yardage there?
Well, and if, if this passes all the others, made the comment last night, we do need to go get a, I guess, Radio Shack or somewhere and get an actual decimal meter that's not going to hold.
Yeah, they're pretty shitty.
Yeah, I, I don't think it's gonna, you know, I called, I think it's Dan down at America's Motorsports, there's only one machine in their whole inventory that would violate the decimal meter with a factory muffler. This is not limiting anybody from doing anything other than tampering with a factory muffler, making it loud and annoying, but...
By the way, when we got the snow, I heard it, I was outside doing my snow, and so I got my vehicle and went over there, and I couldn't, I couldn't find who it was. But there was people outside doing their driveways and everything, and I enquired with a couple, and, well, actually about five or six, and one or two, I'm just saying, yeah, it was just while we drove, now the guy is gone. But it was a, like a four-stroke, pretty loud, pretty loud four-stroke. Most time I think of two-stroke, but this time, that was definitely four.
Any other sources comment?
Yes, I'm just going to be just laying along sixty-two thirty-five, Kenwood, and my concern with the noise ordinance, I mean, we do have one in place, and it just seems like this is getting very nippy on the citizens, you know? Honestly, and, you know, and yet, even when we're stripping the tines on the property, and I just, I'm not really clear as to why the noise ordinance that we have in place is not good enough, you know, to, when it seems like it's a small portion of people complaining, from what I understand, on this versus two thousand citizens in Ridgestop, you know, I mean, I hear noises all the time, and yes, noises are aggravating, but it's part of the life we live, and the things that people have, their toys and various things, but then you're going to say, well, you can't do this, and you can't do that. I, you know, Thomas Jefferson said bad government's too much, but I don't know, that's just my thought.
I agree, we debated last night for a couple of hours, I guess, on, on this, these two pages right here, and it's all about a muffler, basically.
We got one certain area of town that's been, kind of like the citizens on that particular area, been, as they told me, just wore out by this one particular vehicle, motorcycle, whatever made the, Tom, the vice chairman of Anderson said he heard it, too, but there again, just because we passed ordinance, some of them are going to be out looking for somebody violating, like, it's just trying to give us a reason to take care of a certain area that where we can have some legal right to maybe change it, so... I mean, these officers aren't going to be riding around town saying, okay, somebody's out after nine o'clock, or, I mean, they're not looking for a reason to enforce it, they're looking for something to enforce their law, so... I don't really think the ordinance was drafted for, I understand what you're saying, for busting around town and find somebody out at nine, ten, when it ends at nine, so... And Mr. Allen had a good point, the tines need to be changed, so... There again, it's not completely done yet, it's going to be, take some criticism before it gets done, it may take some more effort to get it done, but I know that our officers aren't out riding around trying to find somebody breaking up. A noise violation, we only react to that as a citizen's call, and they get a lot of calls, that's when the particular area, and they had a way to enforce it, so... That's basically what it's all about.
If I may make a suggestion, of the areas that you're not comfortable with, if you can highlight those areas, where we can bring, bring up everybody's views on, you know, what's possibly good, what's not, not good, so we can critique this when we bring up before the second hearing, kick some things out, some new things in, whatever it'll take in order to get this thing to stick because of somebody over here deciding not to use top mufflers, top nile. Unfortunately, it's affecting all of us, and we have to have something for our police department in order to go over there and be able to do anything with it. This is both, you know, we looked at all, a whole lot of different ordinances, and last night when we were working on it, we were here till almost eleven o'clock last night, specifically, on these two pages, ripping stuff out, you know, because we all feel the same way, we don't want to be told what we can and cannot do on our properties.
Thank you. Anybody else have a comment? Okay, anything for the workshop, y'all? Try to do another workshop, maybe on that.
Do, like we've been doing, the money?
I have a hard time making a money, I got baseball book and basketball.
Do we want to see about what Metro comes back with, about a special call meeting, or do we need to set that up now? And we end up having that special call, surely a workshop doesn't need order, too?
You talking about the maintenance station?
Yeah, maybe, and see what they do, or do we want to go and set it up?
No, no, we're just, we're just in the, we're in the...
I don't think they're...
No, no, they're not in a hurry, I mean, this is not a big deal, we're in a hurry to them, it's just, you know, basically, they approached us on, on the subject, and I have a lot of questions, and, you know, once we do, they know that we have to go through several different ordinance things and everything else, so, you know, I'm telling you, if the question's answered to satisfy, and we're not going to be responsible for all these fees, then we're not paying them now with, with our existing system. I don't see the need for a special call meeting at this time. If there's a timeline that's thrown at us, which they haven't signified yet, then call for a special call meeting at that time.
What day is that workshop?
March fourteenth.
Fourteenth? March fourteenth at seven? Is that what it was last night? Seven thirty? Seven thirty last night?
One other thing, the census is over, there will be a company coming up here in the near future doing the audit on it, so they may be doing some door knocking, getting about, ask while, somebody who's asking about census, that's what it's about, and doing the whole, all our information.
How did it turn out, Paul? Did it turn out to your expectations, and...
But for sure, yes.
He was, I want to add at least ten thousand, but we can't, we'll show...
I put my dog on it every time, I don't know.
I didn't know, my house was too loud.
He did, he, he did better than he thinks because it was a sizable increase, it becomes for the city of Ridgestop, it's a sizable increase, so...
Just to give you a sense, we do.
But it's a lot better than what we have, right?
Yes, we do.
I'll make a motion to the legislature, in a second, and I'll try to say I'm sorry.